Dr. Cordellino?
Here.
Dr. Daughtry?
Here.
Mrs. Thannam?
Dr. Graff?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Petricino?
Here.
Mr. Rattleford?
Here.
Ms. Sefkerman?
Here.
Dr. Modrak?
Here.
Mr. Parisi? Ms. Ammer? The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with provision of the Act, the Montville Township Board of Education provided in public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Montville Township Municipal Building, all Montville Public Schools, the Montville Public Library, the Montville Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertising for the Daily Record, the board's official newspaper, on January 22, 2023.
No high school.
First of all, thank you for everybody being here. It's so great to see a packed house. So it's really exciting. We're in the fourth quarter of schools, so I guess all the fresh air and beautiful spring weather brought everybody out. So thank you for being here. Just a quick, a couple of comments of some things that just happened recently. The Montville Township Environmental Commission, they partnered with the High School Earth Club and Reach student members to provide Arbor Day seedlings to 284 third-grade students just this past week. This was traditionally done prior to COVID, and we're glad to have it back. Students will be planting those trees to make a difference in the environment. So we're looking forward to those trees growing. Along that same theme, Hilldale celebrated Earth Day. They had, they were outside, they had live animal shows inside the school, and they had a whole environmental theme. I think we're going to be seeing some of these dioramas a little bit later tonight. And Dr. Modrak, Dr. Cordellino, Ms. Sluth, and I met with our local representative of the New Jersey Senator Joe Panacchio and to discuss educational issues. We covered topics such as state funding, medical benefits, and teacher shortages. And this was a really good initial meeting that we just had, and we're hoping to have many more to talk about educational issues as we move forward. And the last thing I just want to bring up, you know, we've been working closely with the police over the past couple of months, and they've been increasing their patrols. A lot of the students have seen them in schools, and they've been interacting with teachers as well as students. And it's been really good to see them coming back. Some of them are former students, so it's great seeing us and their teachers and stuff. But this increased patrol and popping in has been really noticeable, and we really want to thank the police department for that. That's all I have for you.
Yeah, presentation today, Hilldale, grade one.
Okay, so Hilldale, our Hilldale students did habitat projects. And parents can come on. Habitat projects, they're going to show them to you. So they're going to give their name and what habitat they did and an animal that lives in that habitat. Okay, ready? Stand your name.
It's Cabrera.
Cabrera. And what habitat do you work in?
Arctic.
Arctic, what animal is there?
Tiger.
My name's Viham.
And who's your teacher?
Miss Carmen.
And what is, what habitat do you do?
I created the Arctic habitat. Normal.
What's your name?
Leo.
Leo.
Miss Farisali.
And what habitat do you have?
Arctic.
And what animal lives in the Arctic?
Bull. Bull or bear?
Bull or bear.
Brianna.
And who's your teacher?
Miss Cabrera.
And what habitat do you have?
I did ocean.
What animal lives in the ocean?
Shark.
What's your name?
My name's...
Teacher, who's your teacher? And what habitat do you do?
Ocean.
What animal lives in the ocean?
Stingray.
What's your name?
Reagan.
Reagan. Who's your teacher?
Ms. Carl.
Ms. Carl, what habitat do you do?
The woodland.
The woodlands, and an animal that lives in the woodland?
Yup.
Thank you to Ms. Carl, Mrs. Cabrera, and Miss Farisali.
Our next presentation, William Mason, grade five, the West Museum. Ms. Williams, she's five. For a price. All right, so the William Mason fifth graders, along with their teachers who are here tonight, Ms. Williams, Ms. Blockland, stand up, take bow. We did some research on famous Americans, and it culminated with our wax museum. So parents were invited in, students were invited in to have a little life show, "Bac Kim to Life." And so what I thought we would do, instead of us walking around, I'm going to hand the microphone off to our two famous Americans. They'll share a little bit about who they are and the research that they did. We're going to start with Catherine. Catherine's going to go second.
My name is Johan Sebastian Bach. I was born March 31st, 1685. I composed more than 1,000 pieces of music. I enriched established German styles through my strong counterpoint and harmonic organization. My elder brother played a role in my success by teaching me keyboard and organ in my early years. I died July 18th, 1715, Life's Birth building.
Hi, I'm Catherine Johnson. I was born on August 26, 1918. I was a mathematical genius. I worked for NASA. I helped the first aircraft orbit Earth and land on the moon.
Catherine, who was born there, is yours or mine? Thank you. Former members of the Board of Education, please, if you'd like to be up. Good? All right. Former members of the Board of Education, good evening. We've all heard the phrase that timing is everything, and the importance of being at the right place at the right time. And as Pete Mitchell said, which probably is pilot trainees, movie maverick, Top Gun, don't think, just do it. All three phrases were relevant at Cedar Hill recently. Which were, Dr. Elwes was a substitute teacher for us in kindergarten, she was a higher professional that day, and happened to be in the right place at the right time doing everyone's favorite duty, lunch duty. It was where she noticed that a young man was choking on this food, went over to him without hesitation, were training as mom, and a position kicked in, performed a life-saving kindly maneuver on this child. It was over before anybody even realized what was happening. The child was checked out by Nurse Cola, the parents were called, and he was fine, he didn't go home that day, came back the next day. And I just have to say, you know, everything happens for a reason, and there was a reason why you were there with us that day. And I, on behalf of Board of Education, I'm sure they will extend their congratulations to you. Thank you for so much for just stepping in and doing the right thing.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ravi, and I'm a doctor, a student, and a member of the Education Board of Education members for Ecology. I am very thankful to Allah Almighty that I was there that day and I was able to help the child, and we were all saved from a decedent situation. It is very beautifully said in the Holy Quran that whoever saves the life, he has saved humanity. So my message to the community and everyone is that be aware of your surroundings and extend the help you can when ever possible, because human life is very precious. Thank you, everyone.
That was beautifully said, what you said there. And, you know, you take things for granted, kids on the playground, kids in school and all that stuff, and then all of a sudden you have a split second reaction to something that's going on. And that's why we have all these adults in these buildings, to keep our kids safe. And you saw this, reacted, and the kid's now running around and, you know, what's happening, it's anything. But we really appreciate that you noticed that and you acted quickly. And I know you're very humble, but we needed to recognize you for everything you did. So thank you so much for your quick action.
Hi, good evening. I'm thrilled to present our Shopred Stars for the third market hearing. Tonight's stars, as always, were nominated by faculty who are in five different categories, and the winners were selected by the administrative committee. In addition to the recognition of these wonderful students, Sunrise Shopred generously donates $1,000 to the class in 2023. Please join me in congratulating each of our stars this evening. In the field of academics, congratulations to Gabrielle Givens. According to her teachers, both current and former, Gabby is one of the most humble, talented, and well-rounded students that they have ever had the pleasure of teaching. Gabby has proudly maintained a 4.2+ GPA, but this number does not capture the full picture of how hard Gabby works or how passionate she is about learning. While the honors and AP level classes she has taken are impressive, we are and she is also proud of her other contributions to MTHS. For example, Gabby is co-president of Reach, a mentor for Pathways, and volunteer for Meals on Wheels program, and also Elijah's Promised Soup Kitchen, which are incredible organizations whose missions are to feed those in need. Gabby has also volunteered her time at the Chelsea Assistant Living Facility, particularly on bingo nights. In addition to her community service, Gabby is the president of an Italian honor society, inductee into the National Honor Society, and member of our varsity girls soccer team. Gabby's passion for business is particularly noteworthy as a member of FBLA. She recently was part of a team placed third in Parliamentary Procedures State Leadership Conference, ultimately qualifying then her team for the National Leadership Conference. Gabby will be attending the University of Washington in the fall and plans to major in economics and minor in business. Again, congratulations. In the field of athletics, congratulations to Grace Koalski. For the last three years, Grace has been the shortstop and captain of our girls' softball team. For the past two years, Grace has been the point guard and captain of our girls' basketball team. Both of these teams have been incredibly successful, in part because of Grace's leadership, talent, and determination. During her athletic career at MTHS, Grace helped win the school's first county titles for softball and basketball, and has won two conference titles in basketball and one conference title in softball. This basketball season, Grace surpassed 1,000 career points. She has also earned first-team All-Conference honors for two consecutive years in basketball and softball. Grace has also made the All-County Team three years in a row for basketball, and last year for softball, and was selected to the NJ All-Group Three Second Team. To round out her senior year in athletics, Grace was chosen to play in the North-South Senior All-Star League. Grace is also proud to be able to inspire young girls in the local community, training future players, and developing skills, building confidence, leadership characteristics, and overall love for the game. In addition to the time spent on the court or field, Grace has been able to maintain a 4.0+ GPA, is a member of the National Honor Society, and is on our leadership committee for the MTHS yearbook. In the fall, Grace will be attending TCNJ, playing basketball for the Lions, and majoring in statistics. Again, congratulations. In the field of the arts, congratulations to Laura Justice. Laura has been a very active part of our arts department for the entire, for her entire high school career. She has been in the women's choir and chamber choir since freshman year, a member of the Tri-And Music Honor Society for the last three years, this year's choir vice president, and was recently selected to be in Montville's new a cappella group, Impulse. In addition, Laura is president of the Montville Theatre Company, and was the student director and assistant vocal director for this year's outstanding spring musical, Joseph and Technicolor Dreamcoat, giving her the unique opportunity to teach fourth through sixth graders in the children's choir. Laura was also the stage manager for the bizarre performance of The Music Man Junior, which just performed a couple of weeks ago. Outside of MTHS, Laura is a member of the NJ SMA Region One Honor Choir, NJ MEA Allstate Choir, where she was a soloist, and the Morris Area Honor Choir, where she was ranked the number-one soprano two, placing her as the section leader. Additionally, she was selected as the, as one of only five soprano twos from the entire state of Jersey to be part of the NAFME All Eastern Mix Choir, where she was also selected to perform a solo in one of their songs. When not performing, Laura works at Calandres as a hostess, where she sometimes is to perform with the hired singers. Outside of her accomplishments in the arts, Laura has maintained a 4.4+ GPA, is a member of the National Honor Society, played varsity field hockey for two years, and was recently published in the NCBI, which is the National Center for Biological Information, for the research she conducted through her resume files. After graduation, Laura is planning to study medical laboratory science, although she's still deciding on where to look in college. She hopes to one day be a bio teacher, hopefully here. Again, congratulations. In the field of community service, congratulations to Serena Day. Our school and local community is a better place because of Serena's outstanding and selfish contributions. Two years ago, Serena was nominated to attend a youth wellness conference, which became the impetus for a club on campus focused on student mental health and overall wellbeing. Today, the Mental Health Initiative Club, of which Serena is co-founder and also co-president, has already led to a real positive impact and change in the building. Serena has also volunteered her time in annual community service cleanups, in healthcare walks, and in organizations such as Pathways Relay for Life, where she is the president of the MTHS Club organizing over ninety members, and Letters for Rose, where she was the founder and co-leader of the Montville chapter during the COVID-19 pandemic. In addition, Serena is a Montville Youth Softball Summer Camp counselor, has been a Girl Scouts kindergarten, is a member of the International Concerns Club, National Honor Society, French Honor Society, and is president of peers as leaders, where she assists in replanning and running multiple student events, including new student orientation. Outside of her volunteer work, Serena is an accomplished member of several debate teams, the Montville Forensics Team, speech competitor in duo interpretation, two-time National Catholic Forensics League qualifier, an octo-finalist at the Harvard Forensics Competition this past February, and was ranked fourth overall at the Forensics State Competition in March. Serena proudly maintains a 4.3+ GPA as captain of the field hockey and softball teams, served as student council vice president for four years, and also is a student ambassador at most MTHS events. Serena is still deciding on where she will attend college in the fall, but plans to pursue a major in political science on the pre-law path. Again, congratulations. In the field of leadership, congratulations to Carl Monaco. For anyone who knew Carl's athletic talents prior to this school year, he was poised to have a remarkable senior year on the baseball and wrestling teams. During Carl's junior year in baseball, he was the leadoff hitter with an average of just under 400, helped the team get off to a 13-0 restart, he's a major reason why our Mustangs competed in the section final. During his junior year in wrestling, Carl had a 22-2 season and finished fifth place in the entire region. As a wrestler, Carl's proudest accomplishment was being a starter for the first MTHS team to win a group championship. Unfortunately, an injury effectively ended our hopes of seeing Carl excel on the field or on the map this year. Rather than give in to adversity, Carl persevered and found a new, perhaps more important role, leader. As captain of the varsity baseball and wrestling teams, Carl shows up to every practice, every match, and every tournament to support his team in their role models to his peers. Unfortunately, we all face challenges but are defined in part by how we respond when we face adversity. Carl became stronger, more focused, and more determined to make a positive impact on both of those teams. Carl's ability to lead in your role model for others is also evidenced by his work in the classroom. For example, Carl has been able to maintain a 4.1+ GPA, is a tireless worker, and always puts forth his best effort during any lesson and ongoing assessment. Carl's is a shining example of what it means to be a leader. In the fall, Carl will attend Columbia University, wrestle with their Division One Lions, and major in business. Again, congratulations to Carl and to all of our wonderful students.
Just incredible. Thank you for presenting all that, and just so wonderful to see the talents of our students from the early ages in elementary school all the way up to the senior year. It's something to be really proud of. The school's very special, and you see the results at these board meetings. So thank you.
Okay, this is the concern.
So as part of the agenda tonight, the board will be approving the annual school budget for the 2023-24 school year. Just as... So just as a background in terms of the school budget, the school budget is the Board of Education and Administration's plan for where it will go for the next school year. Part of that process includes the board's strategic plans, as well as the academic expectations of the district. When the budget is put together, the budget needs to balance according to state statute, meaning that the revenues raised have to be sufficient to actually cover the costs that the district intends to incur. And in order to do that, it has to be running efficiently. The state of New Jersey guides the district in terms of how it puts its costs together, and we usually present on program areas, those including instruction, support services, administration, employee benefits, and operations. So the first of those is the instructional area. These would be the costs that relate to the actual classrooms that students are participating in. This includes regular, as well as special ed, basic skills in bilingual classrooms, but it also includes areas like curricular and athletics, as well as add a district placement for those students for whom we cannot educate in district. In terms of in the 2023-24 school year, we have included an additional elementary teacher due to enrollment changes at the elementary level. We have included an industrial arts teacher at the high school, and a part-time bilingual teacher who will be across the entire district. We have added a pre-K program and additional special ed teachers due to student needs. We have continued the one-to-one Chromebook initiative and have expanded our online applications so that the students are utilizing online services instead of actual textbooks. We will be continuing the PSAT testing at the high school. And finally, in the athletic area, we have added additional staffing related to boys and girls soccer. The second area is support services. These would be services that help the teachers in the classrooms with the students. They can include anything from nursing services, as well as speech, occupational and physical therapy, extraordinary services, but it's also your child study teams, your media specialists, your guidance counselors, and then the curriculum and training that goes into supporting the teachers. Each year, we budget for the related and extraordinary services based on student needs. Those needs are determined through the ITP process. And as part of that, at the high school, that includes vocational services for our special ed population. This year, we will be, for the 2023-24 year, we will be bringing those services in-house more, and so as a result, that's one area where you see a reduction in cost, as we will no longer be using an outside service. We will be continuing our behavioral care and mental health initiatives that we have started last year and this year, and will continue into next year. And then lastly, in the curriculum area, we will be continuing to align the curricula to the benchmarks in multiple disciplines as determined by the state. The next area is the area of administration and benefits. So this area contains the administrators that are for district-wide, as well as specific schools, and then the support areas, such as the business and technology areas. and then the support areas such as the business and technology areas. Variances in general administration tend to occur due to professional costs such as legal, architectural costs, auditors, things like that. Additionally, in the area of business and technology, we will be adding an additional computer technician for the purpose of addressing our expanding technology needs district-wide and then cybersecurity issues that affect the district. In terms of health insurance, health insurance has been increasing over the last few years, and the increases are directly related to the premiums on the medical insurance. The final area is building and operations. This area includes the maintenance and custodial services that are in each of the buildings, as well as security. This includes transportation services, food services, and then also includes equipment being purchased and improvements to the buildings that will be done. We will be continuing the school resource officer and the two class three officers. One was added to, is housed at the high school and one has been added to Lazar. In general, transportation costs have been increasing as fuel costs have been increasing and the driver shortage to find drivers has been an ongoing issue over the last few years. And then finally, in the area of equipment and improvements, we have the projects that will occur during the summer of '23. We will be doing an update of the exterior of Cedar Hill, and we'll be doing some security improvements at that building. We will be doing a renovation of the interior hallways at Lazar Middle School, as well as the cleaning up of the lockers. We are putting in an outdoor learning area at Woodmont, and then we'll be doing painting projects and ceiling replacements at the high school and the middle school. A total that all those pieces added together produces a budget that is about four percent higher than it was last year. Inclusive in that number is money that the board has put aside for the purpose of doing maintenance and capital repairs. And that money is like a savings account that has been specifically put aside in order for us to do maintenance, large maintenance on the building. So the projects that were mentioned that would be done during the summer of '23 are being funded through those funds. When you look at the pie chart at the top, what you notice is that a large percentage of the money is being spent directly by the students. Money's from instruction, support service, as well as the grant areas are all being added together to average at about sixty percent of the total budget. With inclusive of the benefits, that number comes up to about seventy-five percent. In terms of the revenue side, like most suburban districts, most of the revenue is coming from the tax basis. However, there are some other sources that are miscellaneous revenue. And then we did receive quite a bit of money from the state in the various aids. Aids are given for specific reasons, the ones that we have qualified for, our transportation, various special ed, ed security aid. In total, along with the savings that we put forward, so the board appropriated some of its available savings to help offset the tax impact, the total amount of revenues available equal the total amount of expenditures that intend to be incurred. And in addition, the revenues from the reserves equal the amount that is expected to be spent on those projects. There are two other funds other than the general fund, which is the one I've just reviewed, and those include special revenue and debt service. In the case of special revenue, those are sources of revenue that have come in for very specific purposes. They can be local grants from local donors, but they can also be from the state and federal government. In the case of the state, it generally tends to be non-public funding that passes through us to the non-publics in the district. In terms of the federal, that includes grants such as the title grants, IDEA, and then the ESTR funds that related to assistance during COVID. Particularly, variances in those numbers are a result of us spending down those ESTR funds. The second fund that we mentioned here relates to debt service. So when a referendum is passed, we make debt payments into the future, and those amounts are raised through tax dollars. As part of this fund, the only issuance that we still have left over, which is why you're seeing a decrease in this fund over the three years, is that which occurred in 2017, the referendum that was passed in 2017. If you recall, in that particular referendum, forty percent, there was a forty percent match by the state of New Jersey, and that is what that debt service payment represents. It's the forty percent match for the interest and principal for the current year. When you consider all of these pieces all added together, the average assessed house in Monville at five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, the increase for the '22-'23 school year is a hundred and eighty-nine dollars on that average assessed house. That is only seven dollars more than it was last year. And that is my presentation on the 2023-24 school budget.
Thank you very much. And there's a sixty percent increase in presentation, but how much was the?
Health benefits increased by twenty percent.
Twenty percent. That's not good for it. But any comments from the board about the presentation?
I'd like to compliment the administration for a very enlightening budget. Everything there to continue our path that we're looking for. And I would like to also, the taxes are, what'd you say, how much was last year?
They only increased by seven dollars over that from last year.
Thank you again. Well job to all the integrated work from the board.
I'd like to add to Charlie's complimentary remarks about Cateen and the business staff. We have a well-run school district, and the fruits of your tax dollars, I think, is on display tonight. So thank the community and thank the business office.
I'd also like to say thank you to Cateen and to her entire office. You know, for us, if we have questions or concerns, we ask Cateen, and she sat with me over two hours, one-on-one, to explain this to me. And I came out really understanding it. So I know it's hard for all of you kind of to read between the lines, but I'm really, I feel so secure, and thank you so much for being with us.
I just wanted to say a few things. We have a section here on good news and progress in our schools. Some of the things, you know, that are quite spectacular, one thing that didn't make it here was Music Man. If you had a chance to see the Music Man Junior Musical, it was fantastic, just like the high school musical. Absolutely great. I think that I'm looking forward to seeing the junior kids, the junior high school kids move up to the high school. We also have a lot of very good kids in our school. We're talking about kids who are making comfort bags, set the same barn as cancer center, they're raising money for different activities, different charities. The Trucks Program is now kicking into high gear. Look for your Trucks Program in your elementary schools. It's always a lot of fun to support the kids. I would like to call out eighth grader Aiden Racco, who was our student of the month at Lazar. And I'd also like to point out that something that wasn't mentioned last time was all the kids who did so well in the FBLA and forensics competitions recently, as well as the National History Day competition. We have a lot of kids who are going to these competitions. They've heard some of our sharp rate starts. And they're doing fantastic. It's a real reflection on the quality of our school. And I'd also like to just mention that I was the only one, John, who made it to the Olympic Day Baseball.
I was there. I was in the crowd. I'm a man of the people.
You should have come up. You should have come up and stood with us, John.
I had three kids to watch.
Well, in any event, one thing I hope you noticed is how many kids are there? I mean, we got five hundred kids in the breakfast travel program in baseball alone. That's a lot of kids. Most of them are young. It's nice to have that participation, but it's also a reflection of the fact that we have a lot of kids coming into our district. And we are still talking about the referendum. And again, all these children coming in, we have to find some space where we can educate them, our ability. So it was just an example of why we are talking about the referendum.
Okay. Dr. Mo, just want to add too that, you know, in addition to the Monville Baseball Softball Association, have they, the Monville Lacrosse had a lax default, which was later in the day for the kids, and they had to trust them there. And it was a great, great community.
Okay, so let's move on to Section G, Liaisons and Reports. Facilities and Finance, Karen.
So the Facilities and Finance Committee had a short meeting just prior to the board meeting, basically putting finishing touches on the budget and also a little discussion on the referendum.
Jerome, Michelle.
We need to schedule a meeting, maybe in the next month. We'll reach out to the committee, hopefully maybe Tuesday, the sixteenth of May, before a closed session. We can meet the high school for a study, we can moderate them, so I'll reach out.
Policy, Joe.
I spoke with Dr. Shorter. We're going to be scheduling a meeting in the next two weeks.
Communication, Mike Palmer.
No report.
Safety, Mike Rappaport.
No report.
Delegate Liaison, Interim School Board, Karen.
So just a couple of upcoming dates. May fifth is the board of directors meeting, May sixth is a legislative committee meeting, and on May thirteenth will be the delegate assembly. And workshop this year will be from the twenty-third to the twenty-sixth.
You're still on the agenda for May thirteenth?
I am. May fourth, I think that is. Uh, May fourth, right?
Yeah. Thank you guys. Joe. Speaking, Morris County School Board.
My reporting. Our next meeting is May fourth, and it is hybrid. So as Charlie said, you could register to be in-person or be virtual at Hanover Park. They're going to be recognizing the county teacher of the year and celebrating the accomplishments of all the districts this year.
Okay, Morris County Educational Services, Joe.
We have a meeting on April twelfth, just standard business. We did a survey of our special services directors, did thirty-nine district surveys, thirty-three responded back, giving a positive report of what services that they have provided are very good.
And was they from where else?
Yes, they had a presentation on April thirteenth at the high school in which we had home security there, overwhelmed three adults who were in recovery, spilt their life stories. And we had a ten to seventy-one community members there, parents and such. And we were still Q and A at the end, actually, we were there for the point five minutes. A lot of people had questions and concerns around the pandemic that's occurring right now.
Do you know if you're going to invite any of the other classes?
I have not connected, but definitely.
Okay, Liaison, Monville, let's go to Mr. Charlie. Liaison, Cedar Hill, Karen.
No report.
Hilldale, Charlie. Uh, Valley View, Joe.
No report.
Uh, Wayne Mason, John.
We had a meeting, Mr. Gorman attended a couple of weeks ago, as it was written in the agenda. So it was not a large attendance, but fostered great discussion. We were there maybe longer than Dr. John wanted us to be there. But I thought, and I thought that format, maybe a good format for future for other schools, it gives certainly much more back and forth and sharing of ideas. Probably about fifteen people in the room total, rather than a virtual meeting. And I thought that might just be, you know, something that we look into going forward with each of the schools, a smaller focus, a tight discussion. Hopefully Mason's in great shape. We recently had the Trucks business presentations. Financially, we're in good shape. And we are piloting a lunch program. The PTA president, Monica Govendani, took that up their wing. And they're going to be doing a week-long trial period. I forget the vendor's name. But they're basically going to take care of it. They're going to sort of maybe how they do it, and we're going to get feedback from the parents and the students and decide whether we want to go forward for next year or, you know, go back to what we're doing.
That's true.
Okay, Woodmont, Mike Palmer.
We have a meeting. I have to check their data. I think it's Mesa.
Lazar.
Thanks, Dave. Our meeting was March twentieth, so some of the things that I wrote down in my two pages of notes already occurred. But I will give you briefly. So they talked, they were very excited about all the wonderful eighth grade activities. They're going to Spring Lake, they're going to Dorney Park. They talked about their eighth grade dance, their eighth grade field day and picnic and all the fun activities. The kids will be doing eighth grade promotion, the Dress Like a Teacher and Student Day, which sounds like fun. They asked some questions about the referendum, and Dave was there also on the call, so we answered some questions. And we just told them to shoot emails to you, Dr. Gorman, things we couldn't answer. Lots of different fundraisers going on. They had a pie-selling fundraiser from Red Barn. I don't know, that could be over already. We talked about, the principal talked about the construction update. They're hosting a Ukraine family, which is wonderful. The student council spoke about their MFA liaisons. They recognized the educator of the year, Mrs. Claudia Heinz, how do you say in English, great, who was a librarian. The teacher of the year is Mr. Derek Lynn. He was the language teacher. And the students were scheduling at that time for their next year classes. And they talked about parental support, always navigate conversations with your children during the evening to let them, you know, to speak with them. So that's it. The next meeting will be on March fifteenth.
Did they have Pirate Day?
I don't remember that. That's not in my notes.
Shara had an eye surgery and came back with a patch. So I thought that might be great. I did have a Pirate Day welcome back.
That would be fun.
Okay, High School, Mike Rappaport. Or Michelle.
The, yeah, the final meeting of the year will be on Monday, May eighth at seven PM. We'll be recognizing the teacher of the year and also talking about a lot of the year-round activities, things coming up like an award that's been or presented and all that. Monday, May eighth, we'll report back after that.
Okay, now is time for our first public participation session. If you have anything, any comments about items on the agenda, anybody need to come up to podium, take microphones, say your name, your address, and let us know what you think. You don't have to raise your hand. You can just come on up.
They let you back in school?
No, no. Just come on up, unless you've done, if someone else wants to be right here. Yes, please, and your name and address.
Hi. Hi, good evening. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak. My name is Leebab McCharmann. I am a resident of Monville, and my son, Leelock, is in second grade at Valley View. I just had a baby, excuse me, so I'm still a little sleepy, probably. I'm here to express some of my and my fellow community members' thoughts on the school calendar, which is on the agenda today. school calendar, which is on the agenda today, and we have raised a request to the Board of Education to consider adding the Bali as a permanent holiday on the Montego school calendar. Um, I had earlier emailed the board with, uh, a link to a petition that I started, and now has four hundred signatures, mostly from Montego residents, and it's still growing. Um, the efforts for this basically started because my son asked me why he has to go to school on the Bali and can't celebrate with friends and family, and in discussion with other fellow parents, they also expressed their thoughts that their children had asked them some of the questions, which required, started this petition, um, a holiday for the Bali would be a very important way to honor the heritage and the diversity in Montego. Uh, several school districts in Jersey have already taken the step and declared the Bali a holiday, some of our very close neighboring towns like Parsippany, Livingston, Montclair, Montclair's has started this year, and we also saw news article that New York City has added the Bali as a holiday starting twenty twenty-three. Despite the growing diversity of Montego, we still don't have it as a recognized holiday, and currently students either have to go to school, or they have to, um, have an excused absence. In either way, uh, with other religious holidays, we ask the Bali also be recognized. As we all know, US is a land of diversity, per the latest census numbers, there are two, one, four, three Asian Indians in town, which is about ten percent of the town's population, and these numbers continue to grow. We love so much that the schools are going to recognize the diversity of the Bali, um, I myself have been going into classrooms, making presentations at Valley View for the last two, three years now, we, I know some schools have festivals where children put up performances, and these are being celebrated not just by students of the Hindu religion, but all of the, um, community and in the schools. Like I mentioned, our petition now has over four hundred signatures and under three beats, and which is to grow, so with all this, I request that the board consider adding the Bali as a holiday to the school calendar, and we hope our best we can say.
Thank you very much. Are there other comments? Seeing none, I'll close the session, and we'll move on. Okay. Uh, consent resolution, uh, section I through N, so, okay, section I, minutes, section J, gifts, grants.
Uh, big motion that, uh, both I and six is postponed, so our needs quick to skip. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, uh, is there one other comment about this motion? Can you roll the vote? Yes.
Mrs. Fanna?
Yes.
Dr. Cordelino?
No.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
I'm sorry. No.
No, I probably know that I, uh, vote for.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Petrazina?
Yes.
Ms. Zuckerman? Dr. Mudda?
Yes. I would like to, most everybody appoint, uh, Adacop Committee to report back next, uh, at our next meeting, which is, uh, you know, uh, May eighth, ninth, uh, it looks like they have to wrap for the, uh, big motion, uh, join the committee, uh, Michelle, Karen, the coordinator?
Sure.
Okay. And report back on the next meeting, and we'll vote on, we'll listen to you, and we'll vote on the calendar. Section K, Facilities Finance, any comments, questions?
I, do you have a question, section K, I'm sorry, I didn't email it back, it's about the, um, K five, number nine?
Okay.
Can you give us more description, continue, of what this will entail, this, what does it begin and all of that?
Right, no, I mean, all of us got answered, I mean, uh, Laura Bishop's is a public relations firm that would be helping us, uh, with the referendum, communicates to the community about the different things, they work on an hourly basis, so the, the figure you see there is the cap that they would work at, um, and they'd be working with us throughout the whole process of the referendum, helping us with focus groups, with communication, with the message getting out to the community, as well as, uh, anything else that comes up that we need to address.
When, when will they start?
Well, again, it's hourly, so if you approve them tonight, they can start tomorrow, or, um, you know, we can wait till more weeks, or until after we talk about the tax impact and everything else, and we can wait till then.
Yes.
So they could be sitting in the vault then, you know, waiting, and, you know.
And also, is there, um, as we go through, I, if there's a time where we don't feel that the firm is canceling the way we want to, we can just fire them, right? There's no contract?
Right, I mean, right, so again, it's on an hourly basis, so, I mean, it would decide to, there will be a contract, but it will, there will be a contract, but it will provide a, 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 We already unfortunately have, you know, music in the hallways in some of our schools, we have small infrastructure, but we're doubling or tripling up kids in the classroom, which is not ideal, and we have music on the park in two of the classrooms. So this is what inadequate seating means, and these are based on the formulas of the square footage that the state provides to us. So you're looking at the current enrollment, we did see an increase of students over the course of the year, we're getting more and more students coming into town. And then over the next five years, or actually four years, we're going to be seeing more of a growth increase. This is because of increased birth rates, changes to migration patterns, which means more people moving in, and you're going to be seeing that more and more in this town. And based on the demographer's report, when he came out a couple of months ago, you know, we're looking at another 141 elementary students alone coming into the district. On top of that, we also have four new housing developments, two of them are almost completed, and the other two are yet to break debt, break into ground, but you're going to be looking at another 158 elementary students coming into the district. So that's putting their total around 410 students that we have inadequate seating for at the elementary level. So that has to be addressed, and that's what we're talking about right now. So we looked into lots of different options, you know, taking no action at all, what would that mean? Can we purchase a property? Can we build on to existing, you know, schools that have, you know, property and see what that looks like? And each one of these, including the modular classrooms and stuff, each one of these has some issues and problems or challenges we'd have to overcome, and none of them were the best way to solve this solution of the increased enrollment. So what we were proposing is, and the board hasn't taken action on this yet, but we've just been talking about this in general, but we're proposing two questions. The first question would be the additional, the addition of 24 classrooms added on to these elementary schools, and then there's three of the elementary schools that do not have cafeterias. So we would also like to put in there the three cafeterias. That total for those two projects would be $53 million. If you look at question number two, you'd be seeing each VAC replacements. So we have our units that are about 50 years old or so, they've outlived their life, and we've been lucky with a lot of them. That's the air conditioning and heating units in a lot of these buildings, so we'd be looking at replacing those and then putting security vestibules on for the buildings. The Zar has one already, we're going to be putting one on Cedar Hill this summer, so the price for that question two would be 16, 17 million dollars. So that brings your total to about $69 million of what we'll be looking for. Now, this is not the total that would be impacted on the town here, we would be getting some kind of state aid from, you know, from New Jersey. That's why I left the question marks there. We don't get those numbers for several more months. So before we would go out to ask the public for the question of whether or not you'd like to pass it, you would understand how much of the tax impact it would have on the community. You would understand how much more money we're getting back from the state. So those numbers will be coming in the next couple of months, and we would share them out with you. The actual tax impact on each household, we should know that in the next two weeks, and we'll be sharing that out with the public. I believe that's the main ninth meeting. And at the main ninth meeting, I'm going to be asking, you know, we'll be sharing that number out with the, with the board, and then we'll be taking a look at the preliminary questions. We would like to have the board possibly vote that night on the two questions. They would be rough draft format, but it allows us to move forward to move these things with the state so that they can then start working on this and then come back to us by July, when we finalize the question, finalize the impact on everybody, and finalize, you know, just the whole, the whole thing in general. We have to have that all done by, you know, beginning of August before we go out to the, to the community. So just quickly, what we've been doing, we've gathered information from our demographer, who's presented a lot of these numbers. We've also talked to our architects, they provided their professional opinions. Then we moved on, and we moved, the board did pass the resolution to move forward the projects and all the information to the state so they can begin working on it. Their timeline is about six months before they get back to us. And then, you know, after the main ninth meeting, then we could go out to the public and start, you know, start to tell you what all this would be looking like as we move forward. So that's why we, you know, we're moving at a good pace over these past couple of months. What this will result in then is a referendum question, hopefully for September 26th, when the community will come out to vote and decide if you agree with what we're projecting and what we're trying to ask for solutions. If the state does not get back to us in time, in a timely fashion, when we have to meet our timelines, then we would have to go back out for November, or possibly even December vote. So that's what we've talked about for the past couple of months, and we've shared it to the public, and we'll let you know on May 9th about some more information.
Thank you. You know, other whole business, I have your Relay for Life, if anyone hasn't signed up for Relay for Life from the board. I know I have, Charlie, have you?
Well, I guess I'm captain by default. I did sign up to be captain, and I did make a representation that I would continue to harass my colleagues so that they would donate to Relay for Life. It's a wonderful event, you know, cancer touches the lives of all of us. So if you want to sign up, great. If not, oh, well.
It's a worthy cause, we've done it every year for it to begin for us as we came back to Montville.
And it's on, it's on June 10th.
Okay, we should do it. Okay, other board comments, general board comments?
I'd like to, guys, I'd like to make a comment. Dave, Ashley and his lovely wife and I attended the Breaking Fest with our Muslim friends at the Brooklyn Islamic Center, and it was a really lovely evening. I'm a Catholic, I'm not familiar with Islam, but with the Muslim faith, but I guess my feeling about attending was, and somebody, our speaker mentioned it earlier, it really is wonderful to live in a diverse community, a community where we all can learn from each other, can live with each other in peace, God willing, in peace and harmony. I am a little disappointed that we postponed some of this evening's calendars, but I'm honored to serve on the committee and hope that we can come back with a calendar that reflects the diversity of Montville Township.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo, I appreciate the opportunity to discuss the calendar, you know, further, and I appreciate, you know, the administration putting forth one for tonight that was, you know, inclusive and representative of the diversity.
Okay. Our last public participation session. Anyone from the community wishes to address the board on any matter whatsoever, feel free to come to the podium, take a hike, and give your name, address, and.
Hello, good evening. My name is Andrew, I'm from New Jersey, that's on my address, I've seen all of you now a few times. We've been doing this, but that depends on a few weeks. And first of all, I'd like to thank you very much for giving the facility off and being able to have our kids celebrating with us. It was a very big opportunity that we are so, so happy, and we hope that you guys can further think about this, because honestly, I'm a little taken aback that I know we're going to discuss the calendar, and now we stopped, so I'm a little bit confused as to what happened, so can you explain that, if you understand?
It's just that there were comments and questions that we had, and we're just trying to gather and report insight on how members do on community deals.
Okay. No, because we just saw on the agenda that we were going to talk about, that's why I'm confused, I wasn't sure.
Okay, we're still going to make more discussion.
Okay. So we're going to look at another.
At the next meeting, we're going to take a vote on next year's calendar.
Okay. Well, today, we wanted to obviously go about and still discuss Eid of Fithir and Eid of Al-Ahla, super bowl, and, but at the same time, the main reason why the kids are here still is because we wanted to thank you, and so we could, so they had a little treat for you guys. This is from the Muslim community, so.
More treats.
They were like handmade, so, yeah, more treats. I mean, we can't eat in the library right now, but for later. And then, I think, can you go hit the open table? And then they had, we had pictures of, because you allowed us, our kids to have that day off and how they celebrated, so we had pictures for Ramadan and Eid, and so that was the thank you, the sermon, and thank you card going out. So we'll, I'll see you guys. So you guys can go through, if there's any questions, if you have any.
So what we'll do is we'll put this on display at the, in the board office.
Yeah, yeah, and they just wanted to say a few words, again, I know you guys don't want to hear me, so.
Well, your kids are very effective speakers.
Thank you.
All of them.
Board of Education, thank you for giving Eid off in our Muslim community. It was a pleasure to let us be off in, in school. We got to visit family, didn't have to worry about schoolwork. We fully enjoyed the Eid holiday. This shows the inclusion of the Board of Education. Thank you and have a good day.
Your Board of Education, thank you for giving us the day off on Eid. You made it possible for the Muslims of the Montville Township to be able to spend the day celebrating with family and friends. You were also able to show other non-Muslims that there is a very important holiday we have, with the day off. You were able to show all my classmates that Eid is a very important holiday for us. Thank you again.
Hello, Dr. Corbin and Board of Education members. And Islam, welcome to my Mabga Muslim community. My name is Isaac Rizvi, I'm in the fifth grade and currently go to Valley View Elementary School. I'm here to say thank you. You now know that Ramadan is a time for us Muslims where we fast from sunrise to sunset and give charity to all people around the world who need it. Following that is our annual holiday, Eid of Fithir, the holiday that pays off for all the hard work us Muslims have done in Ramadan. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to feel included in school and in my community by giving me this important holiday off. I'm very grateful that I no longer have to worry about making up my schoolwork and missing important assignments that could affect my role as a student. I'm especially happy that my classmates and teachers now realize how important Eid of Fithir really is to me and my fellow Mabga Muslims. We hope you can, we hope you can do this in the following years for Eid of Fithir and Eid of Allah. Thank you so much for giving us Eid of Fithir off this year and making it the best one ever.
Assalamualaikum, my name is Yvonne, my parents are from Afghanistan, and I'm from the USA. Thank you for giving me a day off from Eid because I have a celebration that I enjoyed a lot.
Hello, Dr. Corbin and Board of Education members. And Islam, welcome to my Montville Muslim community members. My name is Aru Rizvi, I'm currently a junior at Montville Township High School. I wanted to thank all of you for allowing the district to have the day off on Eid with an unused snow day. Eid is a monumental and special day for the people of Islam, and we have generations of tradition and cultural practice on the day of Eid as we gather with family and celebrate together beautiful ending of Ramadan. In previous years while celebrating the day, we knew that we would inevitably have to make up work in school. It was nice this year to be able to celebrate, pray, enjoy ourselves during the day and not have to worry about that makeup work. There have been many occasions where I had missed multiple tests in four lessons and more because I was recognizing Eid, and I truly appreciate the board's kindness in allowing us not to have this burden while celebrating. It was also nice to be able to say that we had the day off for Eid as it gave me a feeling of pride that my religion and its holiday was being properly recognized the way the holidays of other religions were recognized. In addition, I feel that my classmates this year started to see Eid as a true holiday the way they celebrate Christmas or other holidays. They now know that Eid is an important day for Muslims because the school day was off, leaving them to see how important the day of Eid is. Having the day off makes me think that the celebrated holiday of Islam is beginning to be recognized and understood properly. It makes me feel that the value of Islam is equivalent to the value and celebration of other religious holidays. Thank you everyone for your time, and I truly appreciate being given the day off in school on the day of Eid. I hope that now there can be some change in the Montville Township School District with having the school day off on Eid of Fithir and Eid of Allah every year.
Are there any other comments? Okay, I'd like to make more comments. Just a little more clarification on the, the. Wait, I got, sorry, a closed comment session. You have one? Now you can talk. Okay, sorry. Just to provide a little more clarity on the board's vote on to postpone, it has nothing to do with the recognition or not recognition of future Eid. I'll speak for myself, I think I can speak for the entire board, but that is something that the board supports, it's more to do with how to implement that and with other religious holidays going forward and to form more of a policy around that. So that's just one of the comments. Thank you. Is there a motion closed? Second. Second. Thank you. Have a good night, and we'll see you.